I'm here.
I'm here.
It was guys.
Friends.
It was yeah.
It was.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
So.
Even in number one.
I'm thinking.
We really get a session.
I can't.
He's.
They love.
Anything.
That's.
Bad.
Funny rabbit.
Well, it's not.
We're going to.
We're going to.
That's.
I like the money.
I like other summer.
Do you see?
I would.
I would.
I mean.
Wouldn't go bad.
Yeah.
The same day.
Well.
Believe they did start.
Yeah.
They call us.
Yeah.
I think.
That is.
I do Monday.
I'm very nice.
I expect.
I hope.
Pretty.
Baby.
I guess.
You're like.
And check.
You and.
It was Monday.
Pretty.
Well, we checked.
My player.
And.
There's the.
That's.
Something.
I hope.
Yeah.
We read.
That's.
Please.
Or he has never bothered.
So.
This.
I don't.
Yeah.
It was one.
Grant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to. Exactly. To.
There.
Oh, it's.
You're there.
Please.
Almost.
Very.
You guys.
Please.
Oh, it's all. Hey, just sorry. I wanted. I wanted.
Even.
So. Somebody said.
Top here.
Okay.
I went here in my mouth. And that's the. For example. So. I was.
Talking to. And. Say.
Oh.
And so what if the volume's down?
He came to last night's meeting and really liked.
Exactly.
Maybe, maybe.
We could. So. It's. Going to. Send. I did.
For liquor, yeah. I think.
First of all, since it gets muted. You can buy. God. Great.
Thanks. There we go. Which.
Right. Jared.
Same.
Yeah. Same place.
Yeah.
So which one was the new?
The mute button is the lower one right there.
Great.
Yeah.
So hopefully it's.
Okay.
And. Hit the pause. Maybe the pause record.
Yeah, I get it. And pause.
Well, we're just like a test to make sure it's.
Nice.
Letting. It. Yeah. Nothing. Oh, the car. That.
Great.
You got. That's. Fun.
Mm hmm.
Things go on.
Thank you.
The cornball. Right?
This is pretty much what it was pre-COVID. And then there was that whole period where we weren't letting people get close enough to us to cut our hair.
Okay.
My hair got pretty long then. Just. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. So I just let mine.
Winds out.
Yeah. Yeah. I just let mine keep growing and so it got to about a year and then I've been working my way up. It started about. Ever since and so back, back to normal. Nice.
They're three. What?
On the. What?
Of course. We still do that. You know, the one or two. If I put that.
Um. Then. Not. Um. So. Not for whoever's class leafies and they'll have an easier. That's why I like the other ones. So. So Dorothea. She's. Langford. Do you have Dorothea Langford in L A and G E. Honestly, these behaviors. Good. And Gail. Corner. So. L A and. Going to sleep away. G I. Summer for the. And Gail Corden for two weeks. C O R D. Hang them on. Yeah. No. Yes. And it's with his friends time. He could. He's allowed to ride around town though. No walk. Ground. No. No.
So. Make sure. We like. Let's start. Now.
One day, we hired somebody to like grade our driveway and the guy rode on the side of the road on his tractor all the way from Pittsburgh, even though he had a trailer. It's like that moor, the guy rides his long mower from Nebraska to Iowa.
Exactly. Yeah.
He's like. Like, and I met him and finally.
I remember it down, down the high school, right? Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Robin Handfield used to let her kids go get, they couldn't drive a car, but her son could drive himself to town on a tractor. So if she was working and he needed to go to town, he could take a tractor. Take the tractor. Uh huh. Not sure if I watch him this. I keep looking at this. Yeah. Fair enough.
Just.
Hey, I will call to order. We are beginning calling to order the Brandon Board of Liquor Control Commissioners. And.
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda for the meeting. Second.
All in favor? I. I. Unanimous? Okay. And so we have the minutes for the May eighth meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Right. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I. Unanimous? Yeah.
Like consent agenda.
Yes, I would like a consent agenda.
You're making consent agenda. I am. It's numbers three, four and five.
We have a second?
Yes.
All right, the motion is to adopt by consent as an agenda. Numbers three, four and five. All in favor?
I.
Unanimous? We have.
Definitely.
Non-debatable, all in favor?
All right.
Hi. Hey, the Board of Liquor Commissioners is adjourned. We are now calling to order the Brandon Board of Sewer Commissioners. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Comment. Second.
All in favor? I. It is unanimous adoption. Okay, so.
Move to adopt in minutes. Um, the meeting from January twenty third. I'll say.
Okay, I, I will note that only two of the select board members that were present at the January twenty third meeting are present. Um, so.
Well, to pass something, it's free, but the truth is you can pass minutes if you read them and you consider them to be appropriate. I would suggest.
Okay.
I realize that it's typical that people recuse when they aren't in a meeting, but um. We can't pass the total minutes without three votes.
Well.
But he's not.
But. He's not a voting member. He's, he's no longer a voting member of the Select Board, so.
It's very sad.
So. Um. So I was actually present at the meeting as a non-select board member and I did read the minutes and they do reflect what I remember happening at the meeting and so I am happy to, to do that. Thank you, Tim, for that suggestion. So all in favor of approving the minutes, I.
All right.
Any extensions? One extension. And so that approval of minutes passes. And so there's only one item on the agenda, which is the consider purchase of used sewer jetter, Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you. So members of the board, there's a purchase order drafted in the packet for this. Um, the town owns a nineteen ninety nine gasoline powered sewer line jetter, which apparently requires a rebuild and. Tim Kingston and Steve Chica, I believe, both have been able to source. Um. A used diesel one that will do the job. And it also has some. Um. Better features than the one that we have now in terms of what kinds of lines they can gent, they can jet, because it has a pivot on the spool. So there's a delivery cost. There's actually two of these. Um, rebuilt. Jetters available. And so. The purchase order is written in such a way that if one of them is gone by the time we attempt to make the purchase, they could use the other one. Questions? I have a question. Unless you're.
No. Go ahead.
Yeah. Um, so just as a matter of process more than likely. Um, reality, is there the possibility that there's an electric version of this? I am unaware of one. Um. Steve is here. Steve, did you take part in any of the research with Tim on the?
I just saw the. What? That's on the two machines, but I'm not aware that there is any. Electric. All electric. Lights.
Yeah, I figured that's, that's probably the case, but I. Um. Somewhere in the process, it might be interesting to, to just do a search and see if, in fact, one exists. Um, I, I wouldn't slow up any part of this for that, um, process, but um. I think it's going to be more and more relevant as we go forward, that whenever we buy something, there are going to start to be electric alternatives to the diesel and the gas. So just for, um, the sake of the information that I had when, when they showed me what was available and what they're hoping to buy, these are not like handheld appliances or, or even push appliances. These are like on a trailer of their own sized pieces of equipment here. So, okay. Yeah. I'm aware.
It may be at, at some point in the future, things like that will be available in electric model, but.
Well, and I mean, for example, the, um, uh, Solar Fest just had a, um, a major event and they had a port of a trailer that produced electricity to run in multiple, um, food trucks. And so the concept actually exists to have large amounts of electricity to run things like pumps. And what they found in my research is that more and more industrial equipment, especially construction equipment, can be run all electric that way. Um, and so.
So, so I had a question. So. This is currently in Illinois, so there weren't any available, and assuming that that's why there's a twenty seven hundred dollar delivery charges, because.
So the way that Tim described it to me is that when these get rebuilt and come on the market, they don't stay on the market very long because the brand new versions are like six figures, like deep into six figures. And so the, these are kind of an in-demand item and he did do a search that started in New England and, and gradually cast a wider net.
Okay, and so this particular jetter, they have two of the same one?
They're, they're different years, but they have the same. Um. Capacities.
But it's sewer equipment company of America.
Seven four seven. Same brand.
Same brand.
Same.
Okay.
There's, there's just one of the twenty twelve.
Okay, okay. And then. What happens? Are they taking ours? Is that what that means?
Right. So they would deliver the one that we would be buying and then as part of the mix, they would be taking away the one that we currently have.
And are we getting any sort of credit or discount for them taking it away or is it?
Tim was hopeful.
Wrap.
Tim was hopeful it might, um, go toward the delivery charge.
Okay.
But the, the value might not cover that.
But there is. There is some value to it that.
He believes so.
Okay. But it sounds like a less than twenty seven hundred dollar value.
Possibly.
Okay.
I, I, I make a motion that we have approved this, um, with this order. If that's what you're looking for. Right, so this is like far beyond my ability to add or detract.
Right.
So. So. But.
Right.
I did ask the town treasurer about funding this and there's about, there's plenty of money. There's about two hundred eighty eight thousand dollars in the wastewater capital fund, which is the fund that would pay for capital equipment for wastewater.
Okay, so this would be coming from the wastewater capital.
Wastewater capital fund.
Okay.
Um, not from current sewer users and not from ARPA or anything like that.
Okay, okay. And it's not to exceed fifty one thousand dollars.
Right, including.
Including the delivery charge. Okay. Do we have a second on this? Okay, so we have a motion and.
Yes.
Yes, please. Um, yeah, so we have a motion and second on the approval to purchase the used, the rebuilt sewer trailer jetter. All in favor?
All right.
Unanimous passes.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, sorry. Brian.
Yes.
All in favor? I. I. Okay, I'm just a little happy with my. Okay, I now calling to order the Brandon Select Board Meeting. Might be another chance to do it there, Cecil. I, there might be. Um. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
All second. All in favor?
All right. I.
Right. So we have two sets of minutes. The first is for the special meeting on May eighth, twenty twenty three. Um, do we have a motion to accept minutes from the special meeting on May eighth, twenty twenty three?
I'll make that mark. The seventh.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? I. But unanimous passes. Hmm? Oh. Well, I was, oh.
Yes. Yes.
But I wasn't on the select board for that meeting. I can abstain. That's fine. Okay. Because it'll still.
Yeah.
It'll still pass because there were three of us. That's fine. Yeah, yeah, but there are three of us, so it's fine. Okay. Yeah. So that's. Right. Um, okay, and so for the Select Board Meeting of May eighth, twenty twenty three, do we have, um, any amendment or changes to them? Do we have a motion to adopt them as written?
Really? So.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? I. Passes unanimously. Right. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. As I did at the previous meeting, I, I did submit the report in advance and I don't want to read it all into the record of the minutes. Um, but I do have some updates to it. So firstly, I would like to take the opportunity to correct myself on a statement that I made at the previous meeting. I was asked regarding the North Street Bridge scoping study. This is not an error in the minutes. It's an error that I stated something that was incorrect. Um, I was asked about the North Street Bridge. I responded that it was in the scoping study that it was being done by the state of Vermont. Um, the state of Vermont does not do scoping studies. This was done by Dubois and King. And, um, on subsequent. Looking into it with them, uh, they've reported that they're at thirty five percent progress on the fifty thousand dollar contract for that. So I apologize for my mistake. The mistake was based on my misunderstanding of information that came my way. Right. So the other updates that I have are, um, we met on May eighteenth with the wastewater, uh, construction folks and the project, uh, was officially shut down on April twenty eighth, but they're still taking delivery of some items for when their estimated return date comes around, which is the fifteenth of August. In between now and then, um, the EPA will be coming for a site audit, uh, late in June. And that is, um. Stated by them to be not like a matter of concern, but a matter of EPA looking for what kinds of practices are being followed and what suggestions they could make to make sure that, you know, maximum environmental benefit is being achieved by the project. They estimate completion date of the wastewater trans wastewater treatment facility on March thirty first, twenty twenty four. Other updates include, uh, the invitation to bid the paving for the Arnold District Road went out today. The delinquent tax notices were mailed on Friday and I've had a number of phone calls. Um, I, as I was warned I would. Um. And I can report the totals on the delinquent balances. This is the totals, not just one year, but the accumulated balances. The total in delinquent taxes right now is five hundred and thirty two thousand, seven hundred and twenty nine dollars. The total on the delinquent sewer is one hundred and ninety eight thousand, one hundred dollars. He's a whole dollar. Could you give that figure? One nine eight comma one hundred. So the, the total that we would normally be talking about is seven hundred and thirty thousand, eight twenty nine. Because we're doing the water billing with, uh, for the fire district, we're also looking at water delinquencies, delinquencies, drinking water delinquencies and the amount of one hundred and forty seven thousand, two hundred seventy one. Again, this is not for a year. This is the totals.
Okay.
So the total outstanding owed to the town and the fire district is eight hundred seventy eight thousand, one hundred dollars. It's a significant amount.
What was the water amount again? I'm sorry.
Water was one hundred forty seven, two seventy one, one hundred forty seven thousand, two hundred seventy one pounds.
I guess it's not a significant amount.
Right. Other updates to my report are that the trustees of public funds, um, I reported on them on the first page about the mosquito stuff. Um, I was able to get information from the insect control district. I forwarded that in an email to the trustees and the trustees have confirmed that they now consider the town's application to be complete and will consider it in the next funding cycle, which is after July first. And that's the end of the updates to my report.
Yeah.
So I see you had, um. The wood chipper is coming up later in our agenda. We can talk about that, but you also suggested that we set up a, um, a goal setting maybe. As, as a workshop. And I think that that's, I'd really like to, um, would that be, are you thinking like two or three, like when we deal with budget, um, workshops? Um, why don't we plan one and see if we can set goals and then maybe do a checkup meeting, you know, six months later, three months later or something like that. Maybe I, I don't, not sure that multiple meetings will be needed. Maybe they, maybe they will be. Okay. Be up to the board. Right. Um. Should we start on? Um. I just like the format because I think it allows for some free exchange of ideas and it won't bog down a select board meeting, you know, a regular business. Yeah.
Yeah.
Shall we, um, let our town manager, um. Try to organize, uh, as to schedule that by contacting us and finding a time we can all come?
Yep. Yeah.
Great. I will do that. Great. Thank you. Thanks for being open to that.
I have a question.
Yes.
On, um. You report. You talked about, uh, two significant expansive riverbank standards. I like to.
Yes. Yes, for sewer. Yes. Hmm.
Does anybody that don't buy or where are we at on that?
So, um, this was a report that came from Tim Kingston. Um, he reports that the one, so there's, these are river crossings or riverbank, um. Locations for the sewer collection system lines. So, um, he advises that the one that's on the north side, north side of Park Street crosses the river toward River Street is possibly in the order of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to make sure that that line is encased. I guess what's happening is the ends of it are becoming exposed. Um, from their casing. Steve, does that, am I catching that about correctly? Like where it, where it emerges from the bank and where it goes into the next bank? The bank itself is eroding around the pipe. And the other one, um, he described to me as a double river crossing. This is, as I said in my report, kind of, um, actually near your.
Yeah.
It's kind of.
I know where.
On the east side of Pearl Street, north side of Maple Street in there. And he said that will possibly be tricky to access and that would be more likely in the two hundred and sixty thousand dollar estimated range to fix. So, um. Those are things that we need to make sure that we, I'm glad that they're paying attention, you know, and I know that, um, our two wastewater operators are very aware that the collection system is a big part of our exposure. And so, um, they've been vigilant and they continue to inspect all of it and making us aware of this before the fact is really important to us staying. Um, on mission as far as keeping things clean.
Right, so are we talking about shoring up the riverbanks like riprap or something like that to?
Steve, is that? Good description.
Okay. Okay, and do you have kind of an idea of like, is this imminent collapse or something that needs to be done in the next few months, years? I. What's our timetable?
Probably the next several years.
Several.
Because the way the weather patterns are.
Okay.
And all those crossings, that's just two out of twelve. There's twelve river crossings.
Right.
And they were all put in in nineteen sixty.
Okay.
And you'll remember several years ago, there was a break, it grew twice there. Below here. Um, so. Things are wearing out. So you know, when it's something gets to be fifty years old and it's crossing the river and the one on Park Street isn't fifty years old, it's probably putting around two thousand. So.
Okay.
Um. It needs to be looked at because the river has been changing. So that's one of the things about climate. The climate change, we need to keep an eye on the river. Because it's changing and it'll tend to erode things more than ever. So.
Okay. So, so it sounds like something that we need to start.
Planning.
Planning for in the budget in terms of funding, but it's not something that needs to be done immediately.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Um, any other questions for the town man?
This is. No. Yeah, I, um, I noticed that you were going to get us, um. For the June twelfth meeting, uh, quotes for heating oil, diesel fuel and propane. Right. And, um, I had an interesting conversation with Jack Schneider on the Energy Committee about biodiesel and about how it's one of the quickest ways to, um, cut down your carbon footprint, um, when appropriate. And, and I, um, I realized that there's a number of factors that go into when biodiesel is appropriate, but I would like that to at least be in, um, the mix. Um, I would be curious to know if you could get a quote for biodiesel so we could know the cost. And then, um, I would be very interested in, um, advice from your, your road forming, um, as to the applicability. My understanding is that it's, um, seasonal and it's appropriate during some seasons in New England and not in other seasons.
Okay.
And, um, I also understand that Middlebury's had some success with some amount of biodiesel and so, um, perhaps we could. Absolutely. I'm sure we can reach out to all the folks that we are going to contact for the, um, fossil versions.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great. Um. One more questions for the town manager. Any questions from? Jen?[1647.47]
So when you're looking at those, that project with the shoring up of those pipes and that, why is that the town brand and not wastewater budget?
It will be the wastewater budget.
But we're not in the wastewater meeting anymore. We're in a town brand meeting.
So the, the select board designates itself as the Board of Wastewater Commissioners and the Board of Liquor Commissioners and the Board of Cannabis Commissioners and the Board of Health. Um, I didn't make a separate report to them as wastewater commissioners. I easily could. I just put it in one big report.
I was just wondering why we had that meeting and it's in.
Right.
I mean, you wonder that, but like I've been wondering for eight years as a select board member, why we have separate meetings when we spend time immediately after town meeting every year, designating the select board as all those other things. I I know that other towns have one meeting where they cover all the topics.
And then, how many households are the ones delinquent? Like, is it a lot or just a few that are far behind? And then, and that's all change. I mean, it may be the date and June thirtieth, that, that the Olympic tax ever will, uh, the generals are gonna take it there.
Three percent of how many houses?
Um, nineteen hundred and thirty-eight.
Uh, sorry.
I was gonna say she, she gave me, it's, it's fourteen pages with like an average of twelve per page.
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty, something like that.
And Brett?
If, did we have to wait till COVID to, not a national emergency in North Carolina after something went this bad? What is the time?
The board had, um, waived penalties and interest during the declared state of emergency in Vermont. And then the board also decided not to go to tax sale during the declared state of emergency. So this upcoming tax sale will be our first tax sale opportunity, um, post pandemic. Yes. Yep. And and the penalties and interest are being, have been, the penalties and interest have been being applied since the governor's declared state of emergency in Vermont was ended. So is it, uh,
Annually.
Oh, oh, the tax sales annually, but I think he was, maybe he was asking about the normal penalty and interest regime. Oh, the ta- the tax sale we try to do once a year.
Any other questions for the town manager? Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Mr. Moore.
Uh, yes, I, uh, right before Alex. Well, the center of my voice, Steve, it's an opportunity to advertise as well. Uh, electrical contract completed work at Escapero Park for safety lighting. Motion sensor upgrade for the lights in restrooms. Added motion sensor lights under the covered walkway and add four motion sensor lights to all four corners of the building. Upgraded lot lights to LEDs and fixed the timers so the park and ride area has lighting from six, ten PM and, uh, four thirty AM to six AM. All this has been done to make users feel more comfortable and safe and dissuade potential vandals. We've had vandalism down there, which months that you know, reported on, we want to take care of that. Um, adding two new summer camp offerings, dance camp intensives with Ms. McHale and the free first Lego League robotic camper nine to twelve year olds. Registration to open soon at Brandon Rec dot com. Thanks to the work from our football commissioner Duke Whitney, the Brandon Rec baseball field at the Nashby School will soon have a snack shack. Thanks to donations from Silver Maple Construction, Neeler and Green and Patch Electric. Hope is to have the shack open in time for our June fourth baseball softball pitcher day. Ms. McHale, uh, dance twenty-two, twenty-three program ended with a final show OB on Saturday, the twentieth. Thanks to volunteer parents, Jeff Paul, the friends of Otter Valley Music, as well as Otter Valley Union High School. Helping to make this our most successful year yet. Dance classes will resume again in the fall. On May the twenty-fifth, the second cruise in with Ripley Mountain Distillery in Lot A will be happening. Thanks to assistant, uh, assistant director, Colin Wright, where to spread and more cool cars will be showing off there from six to eight. It's not too early to think our baseball sponsors of the season is finally in full swing. McCullough Brothers Hawks sponsor three teams. American Legion Post fifty-one. Granite Area Mason, St. Paul's Lodge, Uni Lodge, Accard Insurance Agency, Graph X, Mace Place, Mountside Flooring, Pocket Path Control and Town Line Equipment. And the inaugural Brandon Extravaganza is scheduled for June third. That's a collaboration with the, we're in a fire department and the Granite Area Co. Project. Food, music, games and fun help build community twelve to six on this third.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Moore on the rec report?
The cruising thing was cool. Yeah, it was like kind of neat to see a big thing happen in each town.
It's kind of cool to fill that, that void sort of thirty, ninety thing that happened. There's more people, there's a, you know, Joe Vai are gonna bring the cars down to my local therapist.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Moore from the audience? No questions. Thank you, Mr. Moore. And now is the time of the meeting that is set aside for public comment and participation on items that are not otherwise on the agenda. Um, do we have anything from the board? And so, members of the public, anything that you would like to raise that is not otherwise on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, very, very. That's right. First is, uh, a while back, one rumor was from town bag and my wife sent me an email asking whether Union Street was gonna be repaved from Elvin Drive to upon road. Uh, his response was, there was no money in the budget this year. And it's a blast through roads and looking for grants to that work. That's all well and good, except the glove is, there's a section between Elvin Drive and Winona Drive that is in really bad shape. And it's only about fifteen, maybe seventy feet wide at the most. Pound, as we send in trucks every month in a while, we pull batch and you know, take a shovel full and throw it down and smack it down. By the end of the day, it's gone. It's gotten to the point now that when I go home, I hope that nobody's coming from the other direction because I caught the yellow, the yellow line. So I kind of wait that section. And I'm hoping that there's something the town can do. My solution would be to have the public work department down there with a backhoe. Empty dump truck, leave up the pavement and put dirt down. And leave it dirt, you can truly get the road paved. Put a sign on either side of the road, you rock road ahead. So I don't know anything can be done about it, but it's really, really bad. My next thing is I would invite everybody that's here after the meeting to go over to the town office and stand in front of it where it says town office. And look at the window. I was here about two years ago asking about when those windows were gonna be replaced. This town got a grant for a half a million dollars. Renovate that building. And those were two of, those were the items that were on the list, but there was no more money. That half a billion dollars didn't cost the taxpayer a single penny. And I was here about two years ago. And it just so happened that after I brought that up and I, oh, well, we're, we're looking for estimates of that right now. Well, that was two years ago. So I don't know who you were looking for estimates from, but if you're waiting two years for them, for them to give you an estimate, it's time to get somebody else. And those windows need to be replaced with that as a spray. You send a half a billion dollars on a building. You look at the front of it, it's horrible building. Right now it's hysterical. What? Last item has to do with this building here. Just talk about we came to the Florida there. Okay. I understand that Boston standard many, many times, it can't be standard anymore. It's splintering, it's coming up, it needs to be nailed. I understand that. But you need to look all the way up to the roof. From what I understand, a majority of this roof is over a hundred and sixty years old. What you're lucky that this breaks last at that wall. So before you even think about replacing that floor there, you should be thinking about replacing the roof. I know the roof is expensive if you're gonna do it this way. It's gonna be astronomical. But don't be spending money to replace that floor unless you're gonna do something about the roof.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hopkins, do you have any?
I did have a question, Wayne. Um, as regards the town office, you're talking about upstairs, downstairs or both? Down, you want the, the big downstairs plate glass kind of?
Almost right.
Okay.
It's foggy and cracked. Am I picturing it right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the weather stripping has failed between them.
With all the pounding and stuff that we live through, it's, I fear is that one of them would break.
Um, thank you for the clarification. Um, so as regards Union Street, um, later in the meeting, we're gonna be talking about paving for this season. And where it's definitely gonna go. I think that Sean has already had, I know that Sean has already had, um, the hot mix in to town to do some sidewalk repair and miscellaneous patching. And I wonder if, if it is such a short section, I wonder if maybe a hot mix patch could be a better solution down there.
Well, I just hope that if they're gonna do that, they do a better job than the street culverts that they did on. They are.
I recall the culverts happening, yes. And then the town hall, um, floor and roof, right? So I did contact, um, Spardella, who is the company that has done the maintenance on the slate roof. And they reported that in twenty fifteen, they provided the town a proposal after having done a survey of the condition of the town hall roof at that time. And at that time, their recommendation was that the town hall roof had reached the end of its life and should be replaced. I've asked them to update that proposal because that proposal is obviously older than could be acted upon. And construction costs have gone, you know, quite, quite out of hand. He said that they will come back to do a site visit to see how bad the chimneys are. I guess that's a concern he had and he wasn't able to just take his measurements and stuff and recalculate with new pricing. But at the time in twenty fifteen, um, that they provided the quote, the, the proposal was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to replace it in slate. And deal with decking problems on a time and material basis as his kind of customer.
So that. Remember that, move that roof up there, it will live work as a, as a building.
Understood.
Okay. And the windows?
I don't have, I, I, I have concerns about the windows from the point of view of the historic nature of the building. Are we in violation of any terms of any grant money that we spent to rehabilitate the town office building? I just want to make sure that we're not gonna risk a compliance problem if we replace windows that are from eighteen twenty-eight or whatever year they determine that they're from. I, I realize the ones on the street level are not from eighteen twenty-eight. I, I, I will, I will stipulate to that as.
Right.
I, I just, I want to make sure that whatever restrictions are on that money that we've spent, that we're honoring those restrictions.
Well, I will check on the, uh, normal things, uh, on about building, I think they're in violation.
Mr. Moore, you had your.
And I was just gonna talk about the, the work of the energy committee with, uh, giving the municipal energy, the Zanc. Money, right? Step two, we're gonna be doing the energy audits of the town. Town office. So there's hope that potentially they're, they're gonna begin there with, with window and sunscreen.
And that would, um, be state money?
Yes, federal.
Federal.
And when that audit's gonna be done? They just, they just released, we've said, and I had an email about, we're just releasing, uh, beginning ready to, uh, open up the grid. Uh, the grid application process. They sent along a flyer of the original planning, talking about the different levels that you can potentially acquire work. So maybe midsummer or something like this?
One of the challenges that we already have run into is that part of the grant requirements for winning any of these awards to do this energy work is to submit like accurate plans of the wiring system, the structural components and all that stuff. And the likelihood that we have plans that cover the whole building in either case is four. And actually, Mr. Moore advocated a little bit, like, you know, these are hundred fifty year old buildings, two hundred year old buildings. Is there any breathing room kind of thing? And the folks at planning were like, not really.
Yeah.
Um, they were not encouraging.
Great. Mr. Carr?
It should help that the town office was just renovated. There might be a lot of upgrades that were done and reported.
We would hope so.
No, we, no.
I can tell you that there's a pipe running through the painting. All right. That broke a year ago. It's flooded my office.
So we know where at least one pipe is. Thank you. Yeah.
So when you were talking about the town hall roof, three pieces of slate fell off over the winter, when will those slates be put back?
Uh, I was, I was not aware of that and I can see if they can make that either part of their site visit or just do it, um, you know, in terms of regular maintenance.
And then also have, has anyone moved up in the ceiling in this building? You know, with that water that came in before, it's sitting on top of all that insulation. Is there gonna be mold up there? Then you have a whole nother problem. Um, does somebody go up there and check it? You know, once a place a year?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, we could have black, there was Black Diamond who did the insulating work, right?
I don't.
I think it was them. We could have them.
Asking or get it on your radar to have somebody check it. You know, it's like missing, who knows if we got water in, but it didn't rip down.
Thank you. Any, Brett?
Would it be an abomination to use the synthetic, uh, moving the material that has the materials like?
So one of the, um, one of the suggestions that Spardella had was that they would like to quote us for standing seen metal, actually, on the building. It, it, that would be a determination the select board could make as to whether they were comfortable with some alternate, some alternative to slate. And I know that there are some that looks like, looks like slate, sure.
Well, I, I would certainly be interested in all the options.
Right.
We can then change, um, your requirements for one, if there isn't, I'm not sure there is a requirement for historical accuracy. Certainly the longevity and the cost.
Yeah, absolutely.
And there's the noise factor.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Noise factor of extending scene that might be a concern.
It's noisier?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, especially when it rains. Actually, I actually like the sound of rain on a standing seam roof, but and it's, it's, it's a very nostalgic thing for me.
So it's, I mean, it's not surprising that that was Spardella's report because every historical, you know, building I've been associated with on boards like this. That they have all said, you know, a slate roof will go a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five years and we are right there.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hi, any other questions, comments, concern? Oh, Mr. Bailey?
Similar topic, but, uh, with the form water issue, but yeah, about four or five years ago, we had a discussion about the waterfall from back of the room. And that's all the water is here to be coming over the right hand side if you're looking at the falls and there's some stone missing. And it was going to be what that reported back was, which I seem to have been smiling that we know it never was reported back to us. And I think before that crumbled more, we should look at that because all the water is coming over and just one, one area on that fall there. It seems like we should try to shore that up or see what it would take to do that.
So we did, we did find out that the dam is owned by the town.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, um, so we can, we can reach out to the folks at River Corridors and see what work they would allow and, um, get into a scoping study and see what it would cost.
Good.
Right. Mr. Carr?
I thought there was discussion about this, the fact, I don't make sure who owns it, but maybe the water department you're talking about, I thought they said if you touch, you touch a dam, you take it down. The options are, I don't believe it. I think that was what the stumbling block was. I mean, as I said, I mean, literally took six or eight, eight pieces of marble off, just didn't make a log there. We can't take those up, put it back on and I thought I was told, and no, you can't, you can't do that. So that might be part of the issue. Because it is frustrating because it's just not the same marble.
Yeah, I guess it'd be nice. I, I feel we should confirm.
Yeah.
Right past, see if that's true before it is worse than it is now.
Yeah, that's definitely worth looking into. Thanks. Any other questions, comments, concerns before we move on?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Your, um, have, have you folks finished the restructuring of the town departments that now include the assistant town manager? And those job descriptions that go with that?
I, I would think that, you know, first of July would be our goal to kind of settle that all out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just one of the, the original thought about it. The thing with the city scene, that's a big expanse of snow, probably one mile sweet.
Yeah.
So it's, I, I even worry about that. Fair, because that's not a picture of it all.
Yeah, right.
We have all coming down on one giant. And she literally hooks it there, that would have to be.
Yeah.
See if we were.
That's a really good point.
Yep. Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the proposed capital asset policy. Mr. Hopkins?
Um, Ms. Gage.
Oh, Ms. Gage.
This is her.
Well, yeah.
Just a thing.
Okay.
Yeah, that this morning, like, is it, no, the league is not actually from the league. This was, uh, we had a capital asset policy in place that was really, really, really outdated. And I just, we typed that basically and updated the numbers, um, they had.
The numbers, um, they had a minimum, we, we don't capitalize anything. Um, under five thousand and I can do that sometimes, you know, but this thing doesn't work that way. And Bill was needing some policy for a grant he was doing, I'm like, oh. This was really outdated, if you could fix it, so. I did not get this on the lead, the lead does not have a capital asset policy. I just, but we had one in place, so I just.
So I, I, I was reading this and with some interest and it felt. It felt of, of it in Europe. And I wonder if we're going to adopt this, if we shouldn't continue to bring it up into the. Well, when it kept saying computers, computer equipment, software, it's like. I can almost guarantee you there's no computer in this town, it costs more than five thousand dollars. That would be a supercomputer at some college sometime. And so I, I.
Yeah, you wanna do that?
Well, I, I think if we're gonna do this, it would make sense to go through and try to possibly even find out if there's a model policy.
There is, I can find that, um, I'll call it something.
Okay.
But maybe we could just, you guys vote to just like craft the old policy, we make that.
Well, it seems like we need to replace it with something.
Well, that's why, you know. Well, the old one definitely.
Is, is there a need to, to. For you, for your purposes of, of getting rid of the old policy, you need some. Uh, project you're on now that has to have reference to the policy?
No. No, but if, if we need a policy to update a policy, I'll, I'll rewrite that and get it. Yeah, sorry, I did look at that later.
Well, and, and there might be some other kinds of things like that, because as I was reading this, you know, the idea that it states capital assets, not this general capital assets and. Perhaps this is my um. Lack of knowledge about accounting terms, but is there a difference between a capital asset and a general capital asset? I mean, it seems like capital asset might capture that whole.
Well, general fund, I mean, I think they're ready to go on capital asset, I think. You should not spend any more time on it, that I should rework it, so come back later. Great, and I will create a whole new one.
All right, thank you. Thank you, and, and I'm understanding that this is not something that's like a time sensitive issue, it. It was just, we're just, it came up and needs to, okay.
And I might just say thank you.
Okay, and in case anyone's wondering, I'm not having a fit, there's just a fly that's. It's really, like, why is she waving her hand around? Alright, so the next item on the agenda is the blanket payroll authorization for the current fiscal year. At our last meeting, we requested that the town manager put something together for us. Uh, and he has done so.
With a tremendous amount of, of assistance from uh Jackie, our bookkeeper, and also from Bill uh for several of his staff. And from Sue for um the Board of Civil Authority and so forth, so thanks to all of those folks. Um, but I, I presented it in this way, there, there are four staff who are on an annual salary at the top. Most of the staff is on an hourly wage. There are some occasional staff, including yourselves, um, that are paid some remuneration for one reason or another. And then I would say that all of these hourly rates. And the salaries for that matter would be subject to the personnel policy or the. Police Union contract or the other contract for the other union, so there will be, you know, overtime considerations and so forth. But this is the base hourly rate.
And, and I noticed that you appropriately identified it for this fiscal year, so we might see something similar to this.
I think you'll see something like this uh at the second meeting of June.
So this is just saying that as long as these are the bills, that, or these are the wages we need to pay.
By the select board and the treasurer would have your authorization to write checks to meet payroll on these terms.
That seems fair.
That, that will bring you into, and bring the town into compliance with the statute.
I, I make a motion to adopt this um.
My second. Okay, all in favor of adopting the blanket payroll authorization for fiscal year ending thirty June twenty twenty three, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Alright, um, next on the agenda is the considering the sale of the fifty gallon. Five hundred gallon fuel tank and related equipment, Mister Hopkins.
Right, so this um came to our attention, um, it's at the wastewater facility, it was purchased in two thousand and sixteen. Um, we no longer fuel gasoline ourselves by dispensing it from our own tank, it was found to be not cost efficient. Um, the bulk purchase wasn't cost efficient compared to using like a fuel card, which is what the town does now, they have a fleet card. We still fuel the diesel vehicles at the highway department from a bulk tank. So um, there is value in this, um, the value that we paid for it is on the top of the sheet there. Wouldn't anticipate we'd get that, but I would suggest that um, the. Two wastewater water operators have stated that it's not necessary to their operations. It's, it's empty, um, and the highway foreman has stated it's not necessary to his operations and the police chief. Um, they use fuel cards for the police vehicles. So I would suggest that the town um, that the select board considered divesting it um through a sealed bid process or something along those lines.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, you need a motion for that?
Yeah.
I, I make a motion that we um. Allow the town manager to sell this.
My second, okay, any discussion?
Yeah, give it to somebody who's not switching to electric yet.
Some other town that, that is hanging on to fossil fuels.
Alright, do you have a preference as, as to the.
Right.
Sale of asset policy, do you have a preference as to, do you want sealed bids to come to the town, do you want to just have bids brought to the select board? At a future meeting?
I mean, a, as I understand the policy, you're going to announce the sale amount at a regular board meeting.
Was, there's no amount yet.
So we're waiting.
Until we get an offer, there won't be an amount.
Right, right.
Right.
So what, what we would be authorizing you to do would be to. Collect bids.
Invite.
Invite bids. Okay, and then you would present those bids at.
However you want, I can, like, the uh. The wastewater operators are going to have bids come in in June for all the chemicals and those get opened at the town office at some point because the bidders often come.
Right, right.
They don't get open at the board.
Right, right.
And this you could have, you could open them as a board, you could have me open them at the town office.
I mean, I.
I mean, it sounds like it's gonna be somewhere in the vicinity of like. A couple thousand dollars. Maybe, is that right?
That would be nice, that would be nice.
Not, not, okay, yeah, then that doesn't seem to me to be an amount of money that we have to have like a. Like, I would feel comfortable with you just doing it.
Just do it administratively.
But I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is something that could be handled administratively. I have no special knowledge about what a appropriate amount for a used fuel tank.
I, I think what's interesting about the case is that um. When this policy was um, was drafted. The goal was to try to um. Be as fair as possible.
Right.
In trying to make sure that um. Uh, people are paying the right amount for the asset that they're buying and that the town is getting as much money as possible for the asset.
Right.
And um, and originally the conceit of the um, policy was that it would be more like an eBay environment. Where someone will put a bid in, someone will see that, either decide to pay more than that or not. And that over a period of time, there will come to an end like an eBay offer. And you would achieve the theoretically best value. Because the theoretical best value is the most that you are going to bear and the most value for the person selling the asset. And um. In the past, there was some perception that there's a, a, a cumbersomeness. To not having sealed bids, because apparently the sealed bid is a preferred approach. For people trying to get a great value.
Right.
And, and this is where I, I completely understand that from a bidder standpoint, the sealed bid has the greatest potential. For possibly getting, you know, a great deal.
Correct, right.
And, and I think that what I was trying to do with this policy was to balance their interests in getting a great deal. With the town's interest in making sure we got, you know, our whole value. Um, and mostly for transparency, because I want townspeople to rest assured that there wasn't any um. You know, possible someone getting for something for a lot less than it was worth.
Right.
And I think the part that, the reason why I hesitated to bring this up a moment ago was because you've appropriately identified, it's not a lot of money. So um, I, in some ways, this is more of a test case of just. The theory of how we sell.
Right.
Um, and that's why I'm bringing it up for this guy.
Yeah.
My thought is just that. As, as there is potential for like you hear about towns switching to electric. Things, is this just gonna like. Long as we, I guess my thought is, long as we want to, we want to sell it before nobody wants it.
Oh, I certainly.
You know, that's, that's, I don't, how we do it, right, because of the amount of money. And I, it doesn't sound like we're talking about a difference of ten thousand dollars, we're probably talking about a difference of. Two hundred dollars at best or something, you know.
You're right, it's a small amount.
Then, then I'm comfortable either way, but that also might be a good reason to test this policy out.
So I guess, I, so I guess my question is, is how, how do you envision it playing out?
I think my original conceit was the um, the eBay environment. Where every bid that comes in, our town manager receives it, opens it up, and anybody who wants to know can ask him, what's the latest bid on the product? You know, what's the, you know.
And so do we have like a, like on eBay, we have a timeline?
We have a timeframe, and it's like by Friday of a certain week, we say that's when the bidding starts. And up to that time, it's up to the bidders to bid.
I, that sounds, I like that.
Does that sound something reasonable to you?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll make like a page on the town website or something and uh. That will be where we'll update the bids as they go along.
Yeah, I, that, that works, and I think, like you said, this is a test case, I mean, as other assets. Come up that we want to sell, you know, if it works, it works, if it doesn't work, then we try something else.
Pretty low stakes way to try it.
Right, relatively speaking.
And similarly to eBay typically, you still have a starting price.
Right.
And, and that's why I think initially the policy says, you know, the sale amount is made public at a regular select board meeting. And so we could say bidding starts at like a hundred dollars.
We have a reserve or.
Or, or we could have a, a higher than another. Well, and I think that's a smarter thing, is to actually choose an amount that's like a, a reasonable starting bid, but as you point out, we want to sell the target thing.
Right.
We don't let it out at the end.
Well, but at the end of two weeks, if, if it hasn't sold, then we have to go down to four hundred dollars, say.
Well, but that would restart.
Then we'll, then we'll know that.
You can also do it by, I mean, you know, eBay also has the buy it now, I, I. There, there's, 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 you know, there, there, yeah, there's various things you can do, I mean, you can also do. You know, you can have opening bids, but then you can also have reserve where you, you know, it's like.
Well, and what you're quickly realizing is I didn't want to create complexity.
Yeah, there's.
So in that way, I, I want to kind of dip my toe into this without fully just replicating the thing.
Right, right, well.
Yes, so two things, I mean, do we have a, a policy on the books now for sale of assets?
We do.
Does this fall in that policy?
It does.
Then follow the policy, yeah.
Well, and that's, that's what um.
It's, or, or does it fall into a gray section in policy?
Well, the policy never specified whether it had to be by sealed bid or not, and I think that's what we're talking about, except it falls within our policy. Right, why, why doesn't it specify that?
What, what the, what the policy really is oriented to is when someone proactively on their own. Came to the town with an offer for something that they knew the town had no use for, like a swamp water. That's, that's what kind of started this whole policy. So in that case, the sale price was known because someone had offered.
Right, so I think Tom. What we have fallen into is that gray area. That, that the policy addresses, someone comes and says, I'll buy that swamp lot for five thousand dollars. And we have this policy that says the sale amount is made public, the decision by the board to accept or reject the sale amount. Will be made no sooner than the next regular select board meeting. And then it talks to the town manager, will provide a cover sheet to the select board with the following information. The amount offered, the item description, the date acquired, how acquired. Assessed value, manager's recommendation. Um, and so it works for, like Mister Hopkins was just saying, if someone comes and says we want to do it. What we're trying to figure out now is how. To use this policy when we are the ones that's saying, oh, we have an ace asset that we want to sell. And so you, what uh, Mister Giles and you have both identified as this, this is kind of a gray area, and so we're trying, we're, we're trying to figure it out. Right now, how, how it works. Municipet. There you go.
I, that I do not know, I know I've seen emails about it uh for. All over the country. This program to sell assets. And, you know, if you, I think some of them are. They're, you know, single or buy by owns, or sometimes they do it on an annual basis. Um, municipality will. This is all the stuff that we're not using, and that we haven't used and um. It's still worth something, we sell it, we sell it all. From the police car, used trucks, to, you know, however, they, they were now.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, it's an interesting um consideration, clearly the, the benefit is the larger you make your um. You know, your pool of, of buyers, the more accurate price you get your final price. Um, there's gotta be a fee associated with it, and so I guess it would be interesting um, what that fee is and if we want to. Go that route, because I think we can go a simplified version of that on our own and act locally. Uh, where basically we just. Exactly, where we stick something up there and we let local people bid on it.
Well, I, I think it would be worthwhile to, to look into municiped and figure out.
Looks like they add the fee on to the end of the.
So it's like a percentage, so it's like auction houses do as well, so.
But are there other assets throughout the town uh owning that?
That we may be thinking of.
So as part of the. Capital asset policy, it appears that someone, probably me, is going to be required to make a physical inventory of all equipment and vehicles. Submit to the treasurer by June first.
There you go.
I have no time at all to make this happen, I have to turn this around soon.
So we have not yet adopted this policy, so um. Are there things that we may be wanting to sell, are, that you're aware of? Other than a five hundred gallon tank? Okay, so.
Wonder if um, for the sake of expedience, we can um list this one ourselves for this time, and then we can research the municipal for the future. Is it then, is that a reasonable possibility?
Is this something that's really likely to be sold locally? Like, is this?
Yeah, I think it's not, it's not like. No one's gonna pick this up from Illinois.
Right, right, so then maybe this is one where.
We can do it locally.
We can do it locally, I like the ATF to be unsealed.
Apparently that's one of the attractions of this, is that it's on a skid. Like, it's, it's not.
It's easy to move and, and ready to go. So.
I mean, we, we can put it on front porch forum, we can ask the town treasurer and the rec department to put it on the Facebook pages, which are the only town Facebook pages, the town itself doesn't have one.
Does the LCT?
The reporter. The LCT has classified ads, we could.
And that's free.
Check it out there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
It wouldn't necessarily just be a municipality looking to buy this, like it might be a construction company that, you know, fuels its own vehicles kind of.
Survivalist.
The, the, the cost on the hell might be a little.
Yeah, now, I, I. Yeah, now, I, I. Right, but I mean, but, I mean, front porch forum is free, Facebook is free.
I guess I'd love to.
BLCT.
Authorize our town manager to do any pre-advertising, if it seems just appropriate. And that the um, as other identified, we do this as an open bid, and we some webpage.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
Is that sufficient what I said, or do you want me to say it again?
No, I, I mean, it's sufficient what you said, is, is that, and then that's the motion, okay. We have a second.
Sure, second.
Right, all those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Oh, sorry, Mr. Carr.
Just one quick thing. That um, on, we said earlier, the whole, the whole, the best point we made was. It's another gray area, the more gray areas you get on gray. The less I have to listen to swamp, this like for sessions. I'm gonna hang myself, we had one more swamp discussion, take months, you know, something like that, so.
Okay.
This is what you guys are supposed to be doing, policy making policies, and the more you do, the easier it's gonna get. Make a policy for selling town assets versus selling uh, you know, separate policies versus real estate.
Or I think there should be two?
Well, or at least they, at least they're granting.
Well, I think, I think it's, it's more an issue of um, a policy for when someone comes to the town. Asking to purchase something as opposed to when the town is the one that needs to go out and sell it.
The intent of the policy was to cover both of those spaces.
Okay.
And so I think it's possible that the policy could be.
Just kind of reworded.
Because I think that they do still rational follow the same policy.
Yeah. Yeah, so it may just be a matter of fine tuning the policy.
So this is the first step of the fine tuning, trying this.
Are we updating the bid, sorry, they self answering the phone that Friday afternoon, all afternoon, because everybody's. Trying to up there and.
I, I think we would not accept telephone bids. And I, I think we would not accept telephone bids, I think we would have to say, submit a bid by email. Or in person, and then on Friday, we can take updates to your bids, you know, in person.
You're updating.
And I would update that page, bidder, bidder number one, bidder number two. Like, like the town, like the uh, chamber auction, like, right, there'd be a little bidder card. I love index cards, Brent.
Well, there's an idea, why don't we just put it in the chamber auction, Bernie? You got room for it? It's on a skid, it's on a skid, like Heather said, yeah. Okay, I'm a. Oh, yeah, that's a problem, yeah, okay. Never mind. All right, uh, the next item on the agenda is the new and improved current projects matrix. Mr. Hopkins.
So Madam Chair, members of the board, I would suggest taking these three pages all together um, as one comprehensive discussion. So one page says ongoing projects matrix. I intended for it to print landscape wise and be in a bigger font, and it came out this way. The other pages are for requests, and the other page is the one percent fund. So altogether, this um, was some effort that Sue Gage and Bill Moore and Jackie and I all. Spent some time on over the last couple of weeks. What we're trying to do is just um, take stock on some stuff that we know the town had entered into. Um, through various ways, like at some points, um, it had just been identified by the town treasurer that there was a town match that needed to be obligated. In other cases, there was a file upstairs in the town office, in other cases, it was in the gears system um, that the state does for bids and so forth. Anyway, so what I have on the project matrix there um, are the projects that. Are gonna, uh, they're, they're basically public works kinds of things for the most part. Um, it's the project, the estimated cost, the outside funding source, the town match, and the status of each of them, so. For the purposes of board action tonight, there's three boxes that have little dots around them in the town match column. And I would be asking in the next agenda item for the board to consider what it wanted to use as a funding source for those. Um, the funding sources that we have available would be the fund balance of the general fund, which. Um, is, is not outside of our fund balance policy, it's kind of where we want it to be, so I would discourage using the fund balance at this time. Um, the one percent fund, which was kind of explained on the sh- the sheets, um, titled one percent fund, and then the ARPA. Um, grant, which um, this is try, again, trying to kind of just give you a clearinghouse view of, these are the votes that the board has already taken. Um, regarding ARPA, and these are the recommendations that other people have made for ARPA related project, and here's the, you know, what's left. So, at this point, it's, the matrix itself is just for your information and possible questions that you would like to have addressed.
I, I, I thank you for organ- organizing this.
This is fun, this is a good project.
It's been a good um, exercise for me to go through it. And it looks like the um, the requests you're making have to do with the following um, pages in our packet.
Right.
Correct.
And so I, I don't have specific questions about the matrix, I, I would like to start making motions on the um. The request you made, and then perhaps we can discuss them individually. Um, and then I'd like to make a motion on the library request for um, a letter of commitment for the ARPA line. I think it's timely, so Chair, what would you um, would you like to have more open discussion first, or would you like to have some motions?
Um. We can, we can do motions and then have discussion, right, um, if you do want to do a motion for each.
I think actually I'd start with the library.
Okay. Okay, and so for that, I would need to recuse myself, um, because I'm on the library board of trustees, I'm not gonna leave the room, but I'm not going to participate in the discussion.
It's all yours. I was on the library fundraising, can you mail out to stay?
Um.
Not active. Haven't gone to the meetings for once.
Yeah, the fundraising committee, you're right, right, um, I do not believe that uh, there is a conflict of interest. For someone who served as a volunteer on the library fundraising committee, but as a board of trustee member. Who is involved in the financials of the library, I have a specific conflict of interest, and so I cannot be.
So my, my motion is that we um, we formally commit a hundred thousand dollars, we discussed in the past. Um, and give the library um, the letter of commitment, so they can proceed with their funding. Um, we need to, is that a? And that's my motion.
I'm not prepared to do anything till we have. Forums here.
Um, I, I hear you, my, my.
We only three votes.
Well, it's true, I guess I'd like to discuss it first.
I think we should discuss it when everybody's here.
Um, I think that uh, we've discussed it in the past, and Tracy was here, who supported, there's a timeliness to the need for this. And since um. The um, there doesn't seem to be a um, a, a, a hanging doubt from Tracy. Um, I think moving as a board, which we are still at core. That's certainly up to you to vote any way you choose, but um, as I say, the timeliness, this has some load.
I was like, in a second.
I checked.
I'd prefer to wait, because I feel. I, I'd rather that Tracy's available to be a third, given that I also was in this specific project for a period, just.
Sales for a second.
Right.
Uh, so my next motion would be a request for use of local option tax funds for um, a hundred fifty seven thousand twenty three from L O T fund. Um, seventy to fund ten, to fund the town farm road rebuild in summer of twenty twenty.
Do we have a second?
No, I'd like to do all these and Tracy's.
Okay, so. I actually think that, just in terms of. The best use of the board's time and the. Best use, the ability to have a complete and open discussion on this. That I would probably wait until the next meeting too.
Well, I, I'd like to just raise that um, I, I think it's um. You know, admirable that we have sensitivity for wanting people to be involved. Um, statutorily, we exist as a board, when we have three members to make call. And I think to stop um, our work while we wait for a fifth. Is um, is not good process. Um, this is not trying to get something by Tracy, I think this is work that we have to do, and we're here to do work, and um.
Um, I think I would disagree with that, I think that it's, it's not just a matter of wanting everyone to be involved. But I think that as a matter of our responsibilities to the town and that. I think that the town is entitled to have every voting member of the select board present for. Expenditures of town monies, um, are any of these time sensitive?
It's missing, there will be a suspension.
Well. I mean.
That's the president, you said.
Perhaps, and I, I, I think that. Given that we are talking about not insignificant amounts of town money. And that there may be people that want to discuss it, that it would be helpful to have a full board for each discussion.
I think for the smaller thing, I mean, we've gone through the rest of the meeting without this being an issue. Right, like we didn't talk about, is Tracy here for the oil tank? But when it comes to four hundred thousand dollars, I feel more comfortable with all five of us, just because it, it. Uh, then there's no question that it wasn't there. And especially that given that Seth said, most of these are not, I understand the, the library is a little different, but. Um, that a lot of these are not time sensitive in terms of the next two weeks-ish.
Right.
Um, it, it seems like that if, if that's what we're gonna do, then we should not have select board meeting before missing a person. And um, because that's really what we've been suggesting, that we stop acting as a board when one person's not here.
No, that's not what I'm suggesting, what I'm suggesting is that when we are talking about not insignificant amounts of town money. That having a full board to vote and discuss on it would be optimum practice. Are there any further issues or discussion on that? If not, we will table that agenda item until the next board meeting.
Your motion to take that, or is it?
Um. Do I have a motion to table?
All second.
Non-debatable, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, the motion passes three to one. Mr. Moore? Oh.
You have bid.
You have bid, you are now the owner of a five hundred dollar gas tank.
Hope the rec van will pull it.
On a skid. All right. So, which leads us to the next. Non-insignificant amount of money. Number eleven is the consideration of the purchase of a wood chipper for the highway department.
Madam Chair, um, I did submit some information from Sean Erickson, the highway foreman. I did have a conversation with him this morning and with Tracy, and I put him on the phone with Tracy. And uh, Sean is prepared to wait till a future meeting, and um, at this point, I guess I would recommend that. You consider this at the, at a future board.
Right, so we have a motion to table agenda item eleven until the next board meeting.
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes three to one. Next up, the fiscal, we have a warrant for. Total amount of one million six hundred sixty nine thousand, one hundred and fifty six dollars and sixty eight cents. You have any? Oh, it is an eight, sorry.
It's not, it's also.
Oh, look, it's there, right there in big print. All right, uh, do we have any questions, concerns about the warrant? No. Oh, Mr. Bueller.
I want to thank Seth for the uh, local option tax update. Because two of the warrant items are, you know, I mean, forty five thousand and.
So these are items that are already.
Anyway, it was nice to.
Yeah, Sue, Sue, um, Sue and I had a great conversation, and this is good current numbers.
And then the only question I had on the ward was the country village.
The carnival is the end of July, what they require would make it the bottom then.
But what's the country village?
That's where you put the uh, the carnival folks up, so they're not staying at Esteban Park.
But they got the town days provided, they reverse it.
Yes, we pay for that as a part of the funding that we get in from them, the offset, the offsets between our. Sponsorship money and the money that we get from them for. Uh, the uh, money that comes in from the ride conditions, on the, on the ride uh.
Tickets.
This is just what the carnival workers have a place to say.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, okay. Any other questions or concerns about the warrant?
Their motion?
No, do we have a motion?
One million, six hundred sixty eight thousand, one hundred fifty six dollars and sixty eight cents.
One second.
And now for the discussion.
Any discussions?
And it seems that we're willing to spend a million and six without tracing here. But we aren't willing to spend ten thousand to move the, you know, money into um, a fund. You're comfortable spending those six?
So. The warrant, the fiscal is an ongoing. Select board issue comes up every time, we all know it, we all have a chance to review it. What we are talking about with the other issues were one-time asks of money apart from the warrant. I do feel comfortable tabling the discussion of the one-time asks and not tabling the discussion of the warrant. Any further discussion? Right, all those in favor of approving the warrant for one million six hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. One hundred and fifty six dollars and sixty eight cents, aye, aye. Notion is unanimous and passes. Second, non-debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.